County Commission, we've just finished up a very productive hour of work session. I know many of y'all that are in the audience sat through all of this. We have what should be a pretty tidy agenda tonight, and we'll work diligently to get through that as expeditiously as possible. But before we call our meeting to order, I'm gonna ask you guys to stand and join us in prayer and the pledge. And Mr. Jimmy Hardy, if you will, lead us in a prayer. And Mr. Matt Memes, if you will, lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, with this coming today, we thank you for this opportunity to be here to serve the people of this county and this state. Father, we just pray, Lord, first of all, for Mr. Kelly's brother, Mr. Wendell Kelly, Lord, we ask you to lift him up in prayer as he does his surgery tonight, Lord, and your miracle, your hand of protection, and have a miracle on his body. We also lift up our Commissioner Darrell Bone tonight as he's in the hospital suffering with COVID. Father, we just pray that you put miraculous healing upon his body, his family, his business, Lord, as the days to come. And Father, we just be sure to give you the praise and honor and everything that we do here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Everybody face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, guys, for joining us in that prayer and pledge. And I just implore upon y'all to keep these people in your thoughts and prayers in the days to come. They've got a rough few days in front of them, and, you know, we all feel like we serve a God who can answer prayer. And let's let God know that our expectations and our requests are of Him to answer our prayers. Now, thank you, guys. So we'll call this April 27th meeting to order. And Ms. Sylvia, if you will, make note of the attendance. And we do have a quorum, missing Commissioner Kelly and Mr. Bone. Commissioner Bone, everyone else is in attendance. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda? And do we have any additions or deletions before we approve the agenda?
We need to add the County Road 17 funding agreement.
Okay, and that'll be under Tony, I suppose?
Yes.
Okay.
And under Commissioner Headley, are we not addressing the Wendell Patrick settlement?
So we're gonna remove that?
We need to add under...
Add County Road 17 funding agreement and take Wendell Patrick settlement.
And also add under Jimmy Hardy, Ms. Easterlin.
And, okay.
We're gonna make Tony number four with the funding agreement, under staff.
Yes. Tony, are you gonna be able to be here a few minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with additions and deletions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes dated April 13th? And so could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Move we approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Got it? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the claims dated April 27th?
To pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills dated April 22nd. Any other discussion?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-seven. Thank you, Matt. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll come down to the public comment sections. Ms. Ware? Yes, ma'am, if you would, come to the podium, please. How are you tonight?
I'm blessed. How are you?
I am blessed also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This is my first time being in a commissioners' meeting, and I'd just like to say good evening to all of you.
Thank you.
And I am before you tonight to address County Road 501 where I reside. My husband passed away on last year, but I was wanting to request, I'm not sure how the process goes, but I was wanting to request if there is a possibility that County Road 501 could be paved. If not, gravel, there is a portion when you enter County Road 501 that it's paved, and I believe it's my understanding that was privately done. But if it's possible that it could be paved or gravelled, it would really, really help. There are potholes there. It stops right before where I reside. There are potholes there, and I'm not sure if the county is behind as far as, you know, scraping the road, you know, whatever. And I've called a few times with the county, and they mentioned that I would have to approach the commissioner if there are problems.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I'm here tonight to request that, to put that request in.
Okay. Well, we'll take it under advisement, and if you would leave your phone number with one of these ladies over here, and let me follow up with our engineer.
Yes, sir.
And we'll see what we can do about at least getting the road worked in a place, in a way that we don't have potholes.
Yes, sir.
As far as paving budget, we're pretty tight on paving budget right now for the year. That would be in next year's budget.
Yes, sir.
And we'll start those budget hearings in late June or early July.
Yes, sir.
We don't pave a lot of dirt roads in the county, I'll be honest with you, because we're so far behind with the existing pavement.
Yes, sir.
But there may be some things that we can do to, as far as getting some stone on your road, or some other things that would help hold it together.
Yes, sir.
And if you will, leave a phone number with those ladies, and I'll get with Tony, and we'll look it over. And y'all have anything you'd like to say to address the request? But we will follow up with you and at least let you know what we can do.
Yes, sir.
But we are behind. We had two major storms this year.
Yes, sir.
And we pulled men off of roadwork to clean rightways, and we are extremely behind on our normal road maintenance.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for coming in. And like I said, if you will, leave your number with these ladies, and Tony or I, one, will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are y'all?
Good, good.
I currently live on County Road 488. There are some very large trees, very old trees, that are on the rightaway of the county. The limbs of the trees are so large, they hang over the road into the road. Several of the trees are, they look like they're about to fall into the road. There's a bus that comes down our road. I have several neighbors that live on the same road. I have children that drive on the road. The limbs constantly, they're huge, they fall in the road. We have to, neighbors, we have to all get out. We have to clear the roadway. They have been so bad that just recently, our neighbor took upon himself, and he cut the limbs so that we could go down our road. And it is a portion, the last portion of County Road 488, that's just the dirt road part.
Right.
The trees, I have pictures where they, it shows where they're, I mean, you can tell from the roots, they're so old, they're leaning over the road. We currently have two. One that has fell and tore our fence down onto our property, took the power line down. One at the top of our road has fell over onto the fence where we have some cows. Again, my concern is, though, I mean, there's currently one hanging, a huge limb hanging down, that if, any day now, if it falls, if it falls on someone's car, a bus, it's, I mean, somebody's going to get hurt. I mean, it's a serious concern.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Well, I'll tell you what I told the last lady. If you'll leave your number, we'll get, I'll check with Tony. We'll get a plan together, and I'll get back with you guys and let you know what our intentions are.
Well, they, I would like to see, if at all possible, they need to be completely cut down. And I'm more than willing to have, the county can have part of our property, if need be, to use to cut the trees down, whatever. But, sir?
It's a dirt park.
It's a dirt road. It's the dirt road part of 488.
And there is one big tree that she mentioned, it's got a limb bigger than my waist, hanging over the road, and it's suspect.
They're huge. Well, there's several down, there's several.
Okay.
I can, and like I said, I have pictures of all of them. You're welcome to have those and to look at those. But it is a, it's a concern more dangerous for, if they fall on someone, somebody's going to get hurt.
Okay. Well, we will get a look at it and try to get a plan as to what we can do to remove those safety hazards. Tony's men are, gosh, they're attached, because we were still cleaning up those, that straight-line wind damage when the other...
I understand.
...tornadoes came through. So, you know, they're behind, but we'll get a plan where you'll know a course of action, and Tony or I, one, will reach out to you and let you know, and, you know, if that's, if what we tell you is not acceptable, I invite you to come back here and ask for a resolution.
Oh, I will. I'll come back to every meeting if I need to.
Okay. Okay. Persistence, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease kind of thing.
Sometimes.
I can't tell you that's not true.
(laughing).
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a contact number for her? Okay.
No, that was on the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move down to the Sheriff's Department. Thank you, Gerald.
Hello? I'd like to receive and award the bids for the shower coatings at the jail.
Okay.
We had one bid, and it was Marathon Engineering Corporation.
Okay. Roger, would we need to do those in separate resolutions?
Yes.
Move we receive the bid for the coating of the showers at the jail.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And as y'all may have heard, and I think I was being rude and talking over him, but Gerald said that they put it out for bid, and they only had one response. So we're voting to receive that bid now. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move we accept the bid for the industrial coating at Shower at the Jail.
Second.
Award.
Award the bid. Thank you.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Will Commissioner Hardy second it? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Second, I'd like to receive the bids from Securus Technology and Combined Communications for the inmate communications at the jail.
I'll make that motion, receive the bids for the communication to jail.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You pick them on the second. Okay? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I request a resolution to award the bid to Securus Technologies.
I'll make a resolution, award the bid to Secure Technologies.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Sylvia, if you will, with the Commission Office, please.
I'd like to request a resolution to open an account for the Coronavirus Rescue Act Fund with signatories.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to purchase an ad for the Peach Pageant, a full-page ad for $250.
I'll make that resolution as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Is that in the Lions Club program?
Yes, sir.
Any other? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to dispose of the Volunteer Fire Department annual reports before 2017.
Why don't we let that be a rolling motion, Ms. Sylvia, of anything that's over five years old? And we won't have to come back to that later to clean the storage area out.
I move we allow Ms. Sylvia and the office staff to remove any annual fire department records five years or older.
Great.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I have a request for a resolution to forgive the late payment penalty for Jax in the amount of $2,199.38.
I'm making a motion to we forgive the penalty, just the penalty, of the amount that Ms. Sylvia stated for Jax.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Giles?
Yes, I'm asking for a resolution for Danny's Tree Service to remove six trees and clean them up at Higgins Fair Park, $2,500.
We need a resolution to receive these... No, we don't.
Nope.
Go ahead. I'll make that motion to re-award the contract to Danny's for the quote of $2,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Libby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here requesting approval to reclassify Nicholas Max from a temporary employee to a full-time employee, April 28th, Wednesday, to a labor for the Chilton County Labor Department.
I'll make that resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, remember, we're still doing Alabama piles. Anybody that wants to clean up, I'm out there. Call me and let me know, and I'll bring the bags or whatever they need. All the help we can get from the community greatly helps.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Libby.
Thank you.
Mr. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to request a resolution from the Commission for a County Road 17 funding agreement with the State of Alabama, as long as that agreement states that it's a 75-25 split, 25% for the county, and we are allowed a fourth year to pay our part.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, sir.
I forgot about the city. Did you want to...
Let's just talk about it, even though it won't be actionable.
Okay. I was contacted today by Mayor Memes with the City of Clanton. County Road 633 is our part that turns off of County Road 13, goes up and over into Lomax. There's a portion of that that is all ours, then there's a portion of that that is city on one side, county on the other, then it becomes all city. The mayor was requesting that we look at going in with them on the portion that is theirs and paying half of it, since we're on one side, they're on the other. That's a quarter mile, and the estimated cost would be $27,000 total, so our part would be $13,000. It would also, at that time, be a good time to finish paving our portion of it, which would be another four tenths of a mile, which would cost about $42,000. So a total of about $55,000 to finish that. If you haven't been out there, there are two subdivisions under development. One of them's got probably 40-something houses in it right now, and then they're about to start on the second one. So it is a road that is about to see a whole lot of traffic. It is possible that I can do that out of my budget at the end of this year, but I want to wait till I get to the end to see if I have any left. If not, then we'll look at it in next year's budget.
Wait, not, not they've heard of them? Wait until they get through with a lot of that construction, and they deal and deal and deal until it slows down?
Right. The, we discussed that. The first one is just about through with all the heavy stuff. The second one, they're about to start. So by the end of the summer, if we wait till, you know, the end of my budget year to look at it, then we're looking at, you know, a good time to do that.
The mayor told me today, by October, all the heavy equipment would be off of it, and that's when they intended to do their portion of that road.
Yep. So at that point, I'll come back, but I just wanted to give this as information.
Yeah. All right. Y'all have any questions for Tony before he leaves? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hardy?
I want to publicly address something that was brought to my attention last Sunday, this past Sunday night, and on the way back from Atlanta, I had Mr. and Ms. Easterlin's son call me and said that a paper local printed a piece that said that I said that Ms. Easterlin cursed me out on the phone. Well, that's not true. I did not say that. And if we go back and look at the recording of the last meeting, it's pretty clear that Mr. Headley helped me straighten my conversation. My conversation started out having a conversation with Mr. Easterlin, and I went, instead of stopping and starting my conversation on the man that did cuss me out and threaten me, it kind of coincided each other. So I want to make it clear that Ms. Easterlin was really persistent about getting her road fixed, and she's always, if you know Ms. Easterlin, she is persistent, but she's very nice. She's a Christ-like lady, been a Christ-like lady for several years, and those who misinterpreted what I said from reading the news that, you know, because the newspaper never lies. It never misprints or anything. So the newspaper that wrote that, if they can correct that, I was sure would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Barnell.
Well, if you brought that up, I'm gonna comment. What exactly did the newspaper misquote you on, Mr. Hardy?
Well, Ms., if you'll ask, talk to Ms. Easterlin, she said that I said, that the newspaper said, and she had four people call her, that I said that she called me and cursed me out on the phone.
No, that's not what the newspaper said.
I can't, I don't, listen...
Well, before you bring something up like that accusing the newspaper of something, at this commission meeting, at an official meeting...
Hold on.
...you need to read it.
What you need to do is call Ms. Easterlin and ask her what she said. I'm the one that had the conversation with her on the phone. She said, Mr. Hardy and her son, Mr. Easterlin, Mr. Nolanis, call him. I don't think they'd have called me out of the blue and asked me.
Well, if you had read, or you asked him for a correction, there's no correction needed, because at the end of the article, it was noted that you came back and you corrected yourself, and I think it even mentioned, Commissioner Headley said so.
I told Ms. Easterlin, I said, "Ms. Easterlin, I don't get the paper, so I don't know what was said."
Well, might be a good idea for asking for a correction, that you do know what you're talking about.
Mr. Williams, I'm gonna tell you this one time and one time only. I did not say what the paper printed. I'm telling you what Mr. Easterlin, Ms. Easterlin told me, okay?
Okay.
So I can't help what Ms. Easterlin said. I'm just telling you, but I'm correcting the error myself, what I know I said, and it was recorded in a meeting, what was said. So I'm saying, if the paper did say that, please correct it, is what I'm saying, okay?
Okay.
Well, and, but Mr. Headley said, on down, is what I was told, he said, "No, he wasn't talking about her." But when, you know how Ms. Easterlin is, when she gets four or five people in her community saying that she's cursed...
Oh, she'd call me the same way, and I'd ask her to read on down about two paragraphs.
I just wanted to let it be well-known. I don't take anything I said back the other day about what I said in my meeting. If you want to hear what I said, go listen to the recording. But I did not want to make it clear, Ms. Easterlin was not rude with me. She did not say anything out of the way to me. So I want to make that clear, you know what I mean?
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. You may have, you may have not paused enough between...
That's true.
...one conversation and the next, but you did correct it later in the meeting. But thank you again, and I know most of the commissioners up here have had interaction with Ms. Easterlin, and she is persistent, and she has always been kind.
That's right.
And got her facts.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, she does.
Well, many years of facts.
Twenty, thirty years worth of them.
Fifty.
All right. We'll move down. Commissioner Headley, do you have anything we need to discuss tonight, sir?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Memes?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Williams?
We don't have anybody here except Commissioner Memes that's on the IDA board. I would, no, he's the only one. I'd like to know what has the IDA brought to the table for this commission for two years and a million-dollar budget?
What have they brought to the table?
Yeah. What have they brought to the table?
Knowledge that I've never seen, that I never would have had access to, just Whitney's knowledge of the people that she knows and the access that she has to information that I would have never, wouldn't even know where to start. I mean, this is what she does for a living, so that's enough to more than justify anything we've ever spent for them. And going forward, she's got more connections and more access than we could ever have.
So we've spent a million dollars for her knowledge, basically is what we have. We don't have anything on the table, and another commissioner said that this table also questioned that now, whether that means anything to him than that it does to me. Because I'd like to know, for my million dollars, my portion of the million dollars, what has she brought to us as far as industry?
Alan, have you been to the IDA meetings?
No, I just got notification, thanks to Commissioner Memes, the day, I think it's the day after the last meeting, when they actually are. I had asked for that.
Those are public meetings, and everyone is able and invited to go to those. They are, they're set dates for the most part, unless there's a special call meeting. Pretty much set times, aren't they, Matt?
They are.
Yeah, in the morning.
And so I would encourage you to attend those meetings so that you can see what they have going on, because there are thousands, and I mean literally thousands, of man-hours that are going into developing what is arguably one of, if not the largest, project that's ever gone on in central Alabama. And the amount of jobs and other things that are going to come to us when we complete this job is unfathomable for a community our size.
Well, the reason I'm asking the question is, city bowed out of IDA last night, City of Clanton. Maplesville is in the process of getting out of the IDA.
Who told you that?
Well, according to City Hall, they're planning on getting out.
That's not true.
They're not gonna get out. What about Thorsby?
No.
So Mayor Height changed his mind, he's going to stay.
Mayor Height has not mentioned to me that he was leaving for either
And what about Jimison?
No.
So they're all going to stay in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, the portion of the IDA is paid out of the county anyhow. The city's very, very little, small portion. And I, I remember after I asked the question, what they brought to the table, is I remember, if y'all correctly remember, they brought us the master plan, one of the things that was worked on hard. They scheduled several meetings, public meetings for anybody attending over the last two years. I think there were so many meetings, I think me and Joe, if I may say, we was taking a lot of time off to go to these meetings that was kind of repetitive, but they wanted to make sure everybody knew about this Alpha Center. Any development takes time.
At the next work session, we're going to have a guy here that's going to present the entire broadband study and how that feasibility study was done and what we found from it. So that will be in the next work session.
And how we can use it to change the county broadband structure and what the costs are of that. And for the first time ever, we have a blueprint of where we have fiber in the county, which, to give you an example of what that's worth, Elmore County already had theirs done and they got the first central access trunk line through there because they already had theirs done before central access became available. We're, I think, number two in the pipeline now as far as counties in Alabama that have this, which would tell us that we would be shovel-ready for some of these federal programs that are going to come out for broadband. That was spearheaded by the IDA. The wetlands mitigation and the wetlands delineation at the Farm Center was spearheaded by IDA.
All the grants we have access to.
The grant funding that's available.
Well, maybe I should have phrased the question, other than the Farm Center. Because I was told early on, there were other projects they were working on.
Well, let's talk about workforce development. We stood up the first ever non-accredited training program in the state of Alabama that was by sheer effort of our IDA, who just graduated a full class at Jeff State three or four weeks ago of equipment operators. They have in place a CDL school.
Starts next month.
Starts next month.
Where would that be starting?
At Jeff State.
Next month.
Out here at Jeff State.
Yep.
Because of IDA's efforts.
Yes.
Workforce development.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, a hundred percent. I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. We have had people killing it for this little county. And I would tell you that, that we're batting or fighting way out of our weight class right now because of this team that we've assembled with Roger and the professionals that we have working for us. We're playing in the lead with major cities, not little counties of forty-four, forty-five thousand people. And not only that, we've got a opportunity, if we can be expediently enough, to our a major employer that's on the hook right now. And all of that stuff, we can't really talk about because everybody's under nondisclosure agreements. But an employer that would employ four to six hundred people, that's going to have some jobs that are valued in, you know, in the six-figure range, that's, that's, that's pretty safe. We have another major company that IDA has been talking to that would come here, that would be several. I don't know about the investment, what that initial, or what that dollar figure is, but a multi-million dollar facility that would employ another couple of hundred people. We're down to number two. They brought, they brought Chuck Branch here, who has brought us a big-box store that we're real close to getting a letter of intent on, which is virtually impossible to do for a community our size. They brought, they brought a residential development opportunity to the City of Jimison in the last two weeks that is in the works. Major residential development. I could go on and on and on, Alan, and that's why I would encourage you to get plugged into these meetings.
Well, like I said, I just found out the day after they had the meeting, when Commissioner Memes sent.
Well, it's my job to inform you of when the meetings are or not because they're public meetings.
Okay, that's fine.
So if you want to know, you find out.
Not to mention that the IDA is made up of volunteers in this county, businessmen alike, that nobody paid except for the director, that are like-minded taxpayers of this county. They, everybody, I think we kind of forget that we are all taxpayers, even this commissioner taxpayers here, that are like-minded to move this county forward, hopefully.
Yeah, I think it's just oversight. Alan ain't been here long enough to really see and get involved in everything that goes on. I think in a few months, he'll, he'll come on around. Like I said, all these new people really need to be going. I mean, like Jimmy said, we went to meetings
Oh, my goodness.
week after week after day after week after week. And you finally figure out, well, you know, we're getting what we're paid for and you just sort of.
I mean, if anything, they've smothered us to death with opportunities and information. I mean, I probably worked two or three days in law, we just couldn't have trees to make the paper that they've handed out to the local people.
And Alan, come budget time, every department's in our budget, especially in the IDA, we are going to question, we're going to question right here in this room.
Yeah, we always do.
We ask, you know, what are you doing for us every time? So those are valid questions. And like Mr. Barnell said, I encourage you to get involved with the IDA as far as going to the meetings.
I'm not on the board and I go to more than half of their meetings. And some of them that I can't go to, they've actually allowed me to call in and listen to. Sometimes they can't do that, depending on how they're meeting and how many people there and, you know, what the presentation level is or whatnot. But, but I try to stay plugged in enough where I know what's going on and I would encourage you to do the same. That is the forum to find these answers out. We're getting a lot for what we're paying. A lot of the, a lot of similar-sized communities, well, larger communities, but have grown. For instance, Coleman, Coleman funds their IDA to the tune of about five or six million dollars a year, if I understand correctly. And we're paying one, one full-time staff person here. And they've got a project with ancillary jobs, it's something like, what is it, thirty-five hundred jobs in total that'll be associated with the Farm Center and all those activities that come here with it? You know, and we've been, we've had one person and a couple of volunteers driving what most people have an entire department to do.
I'd like to ask Mr. Bates a couple of questions now about some things he said a few minutes ago in his presentation, if you don't mind, sir. You stated about the, when you were referring to this CSL and this Rice Advisory, about us obtaining funding and CSL basically giving us an idea of what buildings we would need?
No.
No.
No?
No, that's not what I said at all.
Uh, well, I thought that was part of you saying.
CSL is a national consultant on agricultural exhibition centers. So they will help us understand through economic analysis, data research, an understanding of what kinds of associations and people frequent these centers? What is our real market share going to look like for that? As it relates to the arena, the other things that are going on on that site? So that they can project to us, what size of a facility do you need to build? Does it need to be fifty thousand square feet?
Yeah, that was my question. I may not have phrased, yeah, I may not have phrased it right. That was my question. They're going to help us decide what size of building we need.
Try to right-size our project, yeah.
For the exhibition hall.
Yeah, the exhibition hall. So we're going to be building this exhibition hall?
We don't know.
I know, yeah.
Well, that's kind of what I got from what you said earlier.
Let me try again. The totality of the Farm Center, five hundred and something acres, includes two primary components. One is the Farm Center, barns, arenas, things where the events are held, okay? There are three or four barns, there's a couple of arenas, and eventually there will be a, somewhere around a five thousand-seat arena that's in phase two that comes with that. That's one piece. The second piece is the Exhibition Center and Workforce Center. It's one building with two multiple purposes. The function of the Exhibition Center has to be evaluated against the activities that are going to go on in the Farm Center side of the project.
Correct, yeah, I understood that.
So that there can be operational and facilitation measures between whoever's running those events to make sure it accommodates the crowd, essentially.
Well, that wasn't my question. I understood that part of it is, but from something with this memorandum you're working on, that they were expecting us to build this building, is what I gathered from that earlier.
Okay, so the totality of the project, there's the two big pieces. In conversation with our corporate partner as to what are we going to do versus what are you going to do in terms of being obligated to financially stand it up, support it, be a part of the project, that Exhibition Center was carved out so that it had a dollar value that can be ascribed to it in the bid process. We know where we are, they know where they are, all right? As opposed to saying, y'all just give us some cash and we'll go spend it and we'll let you know how we're going to spend it. The effort has been to try to define our obligation, our contribution to the project. And of course, then, when the operational piece comes along, all of the revenues and expenses that are derived from this project, and the narrative with the corporate partner is that this is a holistic project, one in which we're both jointly developing this project for the benefit of the entire economic district. They won't have anything to do with the commercial district, that'll simply be yours. That is where these businesses are going. So I guess I'm not quite understanding, Mr. Williams.
All right, well, my question, let me make it.
I don't understand what the question is.
All right, let me make it.
I told it every way I know to tell it.
Early on in this process, 2019, I asked Commissioner, we're going to build the buildings. No, Alpha is going to build the buildings. And if something ever happens, the buildings are going to be ours. And that's, that's the way that was stated to me at that night, questioning it.
I don't know anything about that. Here's what I know. The land on which these buildings are going to be built is owned by the Ag Cooperative District.
Correct.
A public corporation that was formed for this very specific purpose. If somewhere out there down the road, this Ag Center shuts its doors, it closes, that district will have property that could revert back here, yes.
That's right, to us.
It's a public corporation, it's not being given to, and we have representation on that.
So we're, we're planning, I guess it's be directed at whoever on this commission knows, we're planning on building a building on this property.
We're looking at the feasibility of it, there's no plan being made. That's what all of this is about. Well, when you say we're building, there's a construction program manager, B.L. Harbert, one of the most international acclaimed
No, I'm talking about the county, I'm talking about from the county's part.
You're not building anything personally. This is a corporate project that's a joint development between the county and your corporate partner. The same design firms are going to design the Farm Center and the Exhibition Center so there's commonality of this, it'll be seamless to the public eye. We're not going to let a contract to a general contractor to go build a building. The Cooperative District, working through the Agricultural Authority, will control that mechanism. We will engage our own, for our own part, the sizing of that building, the architectural design of that building through the architect. Alan, I can't help you anymore than that.
Well, that I understand. We're going to be spending money
We're going to spend probably thirty to forty million dollars
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Every time we've ever talked.
Uh, so the city is a part of this joint venture, are they not?
No, they are not.
They're not a part of it?
They own an undivided interest in the real estate that was conveyed to the, to the agricultural district. And if we do not build, the project doesn't build three hundred and fifty thousand square feet, they can ask for reversion of their half interest of the D.
So the city legally has no say in what happens on the property, but we do?
Yes. The city, the city could have. If the city wanted to participate in the venture, they could have been fifty-fifty partners with us. That was the way this thing was originally planned. They decided they didn't want to do that.
When did they decide this?
Well, as far as I know, a couple of months.
When they got out of the IDA last night?
Pardon?
When they backed out of the IDA last night?
That'd be a question from Mayor Memes.
You have to ask them. I just know that, when I knew that they were backing out was when there was two contracts that had to be closed and they elected not to close them. And the communication was, they're not going forward participating in this, in this project. That's what I was told.
Well, I was told they weren't going forward on their project because questions didn't get answered about the project from the IDA. That's one of my questions from the IDA. And I know you can't answer that, you're not involved in that. Maybe I should be asking your partner attorney because he's, he is involved with the IDA.
I can tell you, he went and met with the mayor more than once.
I was in some of those meetings and all components of the project has been shared with the City of Clanton.
What you're insinuating there, Alan, but
No, I'm not insinuating.
There's plenty of information sent across the street on that project.
No, I'm not insinuating.
People decided they did not want to participate.
I don't, I don't insinuate. I'll ask a direct question. I don't have any insinuations.
You ask me anything you want to and I'll answer.
Oh, I don't have any doubt about that. You have.
If you can guess that's right.
Well, that brings me to my next ones. This Nexite contract. Asked a question to last meeting about waiting, so I could review this contract before we voted on it. In the two weeks I've had to review it, along with the city slash IDA's Nexite contract, I asked a question, would Nexite, Chuck Branch
Yes.
Lose any money if they brought something to the table in that two weeks? Well, I was told they, they had no clause in there for recruitment. And they do have a Section B recruitment, they got paid if they brought something to the table. I went back and listened to the tape three or four times to make sure I was correct in what I was saying. So the two contracts are the same. We could have waited two weeks.
No, 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 they're not the same at all, sir.
No, but I'm
They are not the same. Don't say they're the same, they are not the same.
Okay, they're not identically, but if he'd have brought something
No, they're not even close to identical, sir. There is a major economic shift in that document. Have you read the
Oh, I read the document, I read Bowlin. No, my question was not that. My question
They're not even close to being the same.
My question, sir, if he'd brought something to the table, would he have got money? And I was told, no, because he didn't have a recruitment clause. There is a recruitment clause in that contract.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember anything about that. If he brought a project
That was the only reason, I, that was the only reason I wanted to wait on this vote that I got, this paper.
I think we made it clear.
Mr. Williams
If he brought a project in this county, he would be paid.
Mr. Williams, whether you'd have wanted to wait on this vote or not, the vote passed six to one.
Well, I still got questions, Mr. Hardy.
And so, whether you wanted to wait or not, the vote passed six to one. We felt comfortable moving forward with the vote. If you have a problem with the vote passing six to one on the contract, then that's your pro, that's your, you ask your personal reference. Why don't we do, talk about it in the work session?
Because this is, I asked the questions on the record and I'm going to ask these questions on the record. That's why I didn't discuss it in the work session.
I'm starting to believe we're doing a little showboating here and I'm going to be honest with you, I don't, I don't appreciate what, this is an embarrassment to this commission and this community.
Mr. Hardy, if you don't like it, you don't have to sit here.
We have questioned
Mr. Williams?
We have allowed
I'm going to tell you this one time. I am an elected official, as you are, and you have every right to ask any questions. I'm trying to help you as much as I can, to help you with your questions. But if you want to make a mockery of this commission and the staff that we hire, that's your projective. But that's what it sounds like to me, and I'm going to personally say that. I think that if we quit showboating on this radio right here, this phone, and start asking, that's why we have work sessions, we can iron all this out instead of putting it, like the public, like we don't agree with everything. We're trying to move this county forward and I would like to know that you're trying to move us county forward with us. And what the city has going across, that got nothing to do with us, Mr. Williams. You asking stuff about what the city's going to do and everything? We can't control what they do, but we want to move forward. I know you want to see economic development and I want, I know you want to see our county grow, but sometimes I wonder if you do. I mean, I'm sorry, if, you know, if we're going to talk about this, let's put it out there.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The incentive package, I did have a question about this new contract also. Excuse me. It says, "Scope of work and schedule, consultant shall perform the recruitment, incentive negotiation, and consulting services." What is the limit of incentives that he can negotiate on our behalf? I know with the other contract, he could, two cent sales tax, he could.
He doesn't have any authority. None. A big difference in this contract and the last one.
Okay.
I told you two weeks ago, I approved your contract.
Oh, I had no doubt, it's improved. Sure, don't misconstrue my question. I just want to
He doesn't have any, you know, his authority to grant an incentive in this deal comes from this body right here, when we approve a development agreement.
That's what I was asking. It has to come back
Right here.
It'll have to come back to us to be approved.
He cannot walk in and offer anybody one cent without your approval.
That's what you said last meeting before we approved this.
That's what I said last meeting.
Well, I'm just making sure.
Well, check that box.
I did, I just checked that box.
What else?
Was he the only, were they the only consulting firm, consulting firm of this type that was discussed?
Well, yes, for us. And it's a very simple reason. He'd been working for two years to get projects interested in that site and we didn't want to lose them.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
Well, you got something else now.
Oh, I know you're not scared to answer.
I would reiterate this to you, Alan.
Oh, yeah.
I would reiterate this to you while we're in between your items.
I saw my questions for him.
Visit and attend the IDA meetings and sit and listen, and you will get caught up pretty quickly because they're not trying to hide anything from anybody.
Uh, the DHR building. Uh, the DHR building. Everything, I had somebody ask me this question, so, and I didn't know an answer. Is everything we're doing out there within architectural compliance? And is there anything that we might get in trouble down the road as far as some kind of hazard that we haven't seen or that might not be seen in doing this job?
As far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, we're not loo, moving any low-bearing walls or anything. We're we're doing, we're shifting offices and creating office space, and, oh, well, the man just walked in, so he could probably answer that for you right there.
Very good.
So I'll let him ask.
Everything is within compliance. We are working with architectural drawings to build changes. We haven't done any changes until then. Um, once we do those changes, we're going to have to come everything up to code. So we have postponed those changes, probably going to be another year before we change those.
Just from a financial standpoint.
With lumber and everything going up, and with us getting the codes, and then the amount of money that I've spent on shelters so far, we're not going to make it. Um, so we have done, uh, minor things that aren't going to change, but when we do the remodel, we're going to have to go to ADA, we're going to have to go and redo everything up to architectural drawings.
And we have retained an architect.
I have started talking with one, just to kind of get a quote on that. I haven't hired anyone yet. We've we've talked, uh, got the drawings to give to them, everything. But we have not hired a architect. And, uh, that's going to be our biggest thing, is to get an architect to do the whole drawing, so we can hopefully do it in phases.
And then come up with a budget.
The initial phase is going to have to be pretty much ADA and fire code compliant. Uh, the biggest holdup on there is going to be the meeting room, if we call it a meeting room, if it has such occupancy, heating, AC, everything, uh, entranceway, exitways, bathrooms, is going to be an issue, so.
Is the sprinkler system going to be required if we do that?
It's going to what size, but possibly.
That was, I think that's what, why I got the question today about that.
If the city would allow it to, uh, to allow us to go away from not having a sprinkler system, they would have to grant us that, uh, it's up to them. So once we get those drawings, we'll have to go sit down with the city and say, hey, look, what are you good with, what are you not? Obviously, we have no option but ADA, and that is our biggest holdup, is going to be the ADA. Um, bathrooms are the most, one of the most expensive things outside of the kitchen, inside of a, uh, to remodel. That one is not ADA compliant, so we're going to have to break out walls, change a lot of things, so. There's going to be a a lot more that goes into it. I mean, even the, I guess I told you guys before, the door knobs aren't even fire code compliant. So we have a lot to do. Uh, the building's been sitting there since the eighties and it's never been updated, uh, never changed with the codes. Um, sorry, I've been sitting out there, I was late, so I didn't want to come bust in here until it's time, so. But does that answer your question for you?
Yeah, it did.
So we are going to work with architect, um, and our plan is to do it in phases. Uh, there's going to be a lot to that, there's going to be planning out the building, planning out the corners, electrical part, seeing if we're going to require sprinkler system, everything, so. But we'll get it taken care of, and we are going to do it within compliance. We have a fire marshal out there with us, so. He tries to keep us in check a little bit, but like I said, there are ways that how we name buildings, rooms, uh, the occupancy of those rooms, it's going to be a big factor. So we've, uh, taught the architect kind of just to work us through, so hey, what do we, what can we do, and what do we need to do to stay just below spending too much money?
Sounds like you need to get a Webster's dictionary and figure out what words.
There is a large book, and I don't know when they're going to adopt a new fire codes, but if if they adopt a new fire codes, it's going to get even worse. Uh, every few years, they put out new fire codes, and usually, once they put out a new fire code, cities typically come to the fire code behind it, and they'll adopt that. So once they adopt that fire code, then we'll, we'll probably be in even more money, but I don't think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to touch it. So we, we're just going to have to deal with it.
Thank you, Derek.
I'm making a motion with Jerry.
Any, anybody object? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.